Okay, good morning, everyone, and I would like to call to order the committee the whole meeting for Tuesday, September the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, and declare all members of council with the exception of councillor Peter Allen to be present. Councillor Allen is ill today, so we'll be looking for a motion to accept the fact that councillor Allen is absent due to illness. Moved by councillor Sappington, seconded by councillor Harding. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner. Great, thank you. Now, I have a couple of items here that I want to mention before we move on to the approval of the agenda. First of all, we would like to recognize past Kings County councillor, Bob Ferris. Bob recently passed away and served a full term on Kings County Council. He was an outstanding athlete. He was a very well-known businessman, but above all, Bob Ferris was one of the finest gentlemen you'd ever meet, and we want to honor Bob for his service to Kings County, and we also had our masks flying half ma- our flags flying half masks for him. So, I would ask for a moment of silence in councillor, former councillor Bob Ferris's memory, please. Thank you for that, and I want to welcome everyone here today and recognize our MLA. Julie Van Aksom is in the audience. Thank you, Julie, for your support, and also in the audience today, we also have former councillor and deputy warden Brian Hurdle with us today. Thank you for being here. Last item before we go on to the agenda is land acknowledgement. County Council has recently adopted a land acknowledgement policy which requires a land acknowledgement to be printed on the agenda and spoken aloud, so I will now read it. "The municipality of the county of Kings is in Mi'kmaq, the ancestral unceded and current territory of the Mi'kmaq peoples. The municipality of the county of Kings is a neighbor to the Annapolis Valley First Nations and Gloskap First Nation. As well as diverse urban and rural indigenous population, we are all treaty people and commit to upholding the peace and friendship treaties and working towards reconciliation in all areas of the municipality." Okay, now, we're ready for approval of the agenda, and so I would ask for a motion to approve, please. Moved by Deputy Mayor Packford, seconded by councillor Gates. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner. Motion carried, thank you. Now, I would ask, is there any councillor that has, wants to declare a conflict of interest on any of the issues that we are going to discuss Seeing none, we will move on to the approval of the minutes of July two thousand and twenty, twenty, twenty-five. So, did anyone see any errors or omissions in those minutes? Seeing none, we have approval of the minutes, please moved by councillor Harding, seconded by councillor Lutes. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Okay, thank you. Motion carried. Business arising from the minutes. Is there any business arising from the minutes? Okay, seeing none, we shall then move on to presentations. Our first presentation this morning, please note that we have three RCMP officers in attendance today, one of them who is leaving, and two I'd like to introduce you to. Sergeant Nugent, I want to thank you on behalf of the Kings County Council and the residents of Kings County for your excellent service, and wish you well in your new post. I, I know that you and I only were sort of working together, we'll say, for a short time, but I, I have to tell you, I was very, very pleased with the support and the fact that after hours, when I called you, you were always there to answer the phone, and anytime I went to any of the community meetings that they required your service, you were always there, and so I, I believe you've been serving Kings County residents well, and we thank you. And we have a little token of, of our appreciation. If you would come forward. And with Sergeant Nugent, we have Inspector William Collier and Superintendent Jason Popick, and welcome to Kings County, and I would ask Sergeant Nugent if you have anything to add as far as introducing your, your cohorts.
If I gotta press a button here? Oh, no, it looks like I'm live.
You're on, you're on.
All right, first of all, thank you very much, Mayor Corcoran. I very, very much appreciate that. It's been my pleasure to work with, with you and council and, and the staff here at the municipality and everybody else in, in Kings County for the last two and a half years now. I am sad to be leaving a little bit early, but I'm not going far, just going to, to West Hans, where I'll be in charge of the detachment there in Windsor, and so I'll be at your service if you need me, and I'll, a large part of that will be the transition to Inspector Bill Collier. While I wasn't in charge of Kings here, I was sort of the, the face for the Police Advisory Board and things like that for the last couple of years, so I'll be handing those things over to, to Inspector Collier, who joined us this year. Came from headquarters in, in Halifax most recently, was commissioned there within the last couple of years, I believe, sir, and has commanded detachments across Nova Scotia. Previously, he has a wealth of experience, asked to come here to Kings specifically because he knew that we needed, we needed leadership and, and a constant presence here, a leadership presence, I should say, and we're very happy to have him, and I can tell you from the brief time I've known Bill that, that I think Kings is lucky to have him as well. So, I know I'm leaving things in, in great hands here, so that's great to know. And as well, we have Superintendent Jason Popick, who is our district policing officer for Southwest Nova, so he's in charge of, of all the southwest section of the province for the RCMP, so it's great that he could join us here today. He, he sits in our district office in the New Minas detachment as well, and so Superintendent Popick's been here a little bit longer, and he's been working very hard to, on a number of tasks, but one that stands, stands out in my mind is that he's been working very hard to clear some of our backlog of vacancies in staffing positions across, across Southwest Nova, and Kings District RCMP has benefited greatly from that very directly. We, we are in a much better staffing position now, thanks largely to Superintendent Popick's efforts, so I'm glad that they could both join us, and again, thank you very much. It, it means the world to me. I really appreciate the, the gesture, and I've enjoyed working with you all immensely. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on unless Inspector Collier or Superintendent Popick wanted to say a few words, or we can move right on. Okay, Superintendent Popick.
Thanks for having us here this morning. Thank you all. Yeah, I've been here for, it'll be a year, September. It's a great place to come. I, I was in federal policing. I used to look after the province of Nova Scotia. The integration effort is the biggest thing I'm looking at doing within Southwest Nova. I have three priorities that I'm pushing across the ten different districts we have. It's operational readiness, operational effectiveness, and then modernization. But really, it, it bridges into that modernization. How do we start doing things better? And one of the significant initiatives we've been undertaking is to go after organized crime. It's benefited Kings itself. Most recently, about two weeks ago, we, we got a kilo of coca in one of our searches, but it's an integrative effort of police forces. Part of the movement of Ed into West Hans is so we can start bridging our resources across the, the district. We had a significant event here in Kings where there was a weapons call, where we had a number of explosive devices, but within Kings, we don't have the, the depth of investigators. We, we have five people within our plainclothes section, but through integrating our efforts, we had resources coming in from Shelburne, from Yarmouth, from across Southwest Nova to support what a priority event is for the, the district itself, being Southwest Nova. Those are the types of things that I'm looking at for Bill to continue doing here. We have to manage our, the work we're doing, management being the creating efficiencies, but then the leadership, leading our people moving forward. What you'll have recently seen is by bringing back a number of people that were off-duty sick, as well as a number of vacancies, this time over last year, there's a savings of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in overtime because we've got the resources back on our ship, and we end up be paying that money out to be bringing people in on overtime. It saves our members as well, it saves the budget, so we can use it elsewhere. But thanks for having us.
Great. Thank you for your attendance and support and, and service. We, we appreciate it, and again, all the best, Sergeant. Okay, now, we'll move on to our presentations, and at this time, I would ask that Mike Landry and Jessica Bouchard are presenting for Kings County Recreation Forward Society, and we would say that you would be limited to a ten-minute presentation, please. Now, this doesn't like, like Mike Landry.
Landry has a sick family member, so I brought in last minute, but happy to be here.
Paul Dixon will be replacing. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good morning, Mayor and council. It's great to be here. I've been here once or twice or more times before. Do you want me to state my name for the record?
I think I already introduced you, Paul Dixon, and Jessica Bouchard, right?
So, Jessica and I are here this morning to talk about the opportunity for a new wellness center, which we know a large portion of council is in support of, but of course, there's still more information to share, and we're here today to talk about the information that our society has gathered. So, the first slide, slide on the screen highlights let's build a flourishing community. Our society is ready to support the development of a new regional recreational center. We welcome and thank you for the opportunity to speak today. Kings County Recreation Forward as a registered society over eleven hundred residents who strongly support the proposed regional recreational center. We recognize you've received detailed technical and financial information from your CAOs, so today, we're focusing on demonstrating the community's readiness and actively ready to support this project. So, who are we? We are here to advocate for the development of modern recreational facilities in Kings County that are accessible to all residents. We wish to promote the establishment of year-round recreation spaces that strengthen our community's health, vitality, economy, and social connections. We wish to gather and represent community input regarding the design and services of regional recreational facilities, and we wish to collaborate with you as our municipal government, community organizations, and other stakeholders to support the development of recreational infrastructure in Kings County. Our group represents the full spectrum of Kings County residents, from young families to seniors, healthcare professionals to business owners. We've incorporated as a society to formalize our commitment. Our membership includes professionals with experience in capital campaigns, event organization, and community program development. We're not just asking for this facility, we're offering our help. So, here's the numbers. We have a membership over eleven hundred residents at this time, and we have responses over four hundred and seventy rep- residents representing every district and town in Kings County. Our society represents residents from every corner of Kings County. Our survey received over four hundred and seventy detailed responses with support across districts and towns, making up a hundred and ninety-seven unique postal codes. This isn't just about numbers. Each response represents a family, a senior, or a young person who sees this facility as essential for our community's future. So, lots of colors up here, but basically, our survey results show facility amenity preference that match what was outlined in the feasibility report and what is proposed for the recreational center. So, direct economic returns. Job creation. As been noted to council already, this facility will create approximately seventy-five to hundred construction jobs and twenty permanent positions. Revenue streams based on comparable facilities, user fees, rentals, and programs should cover sixty to eighty-five percent of the operational cost. Tourism and visitor spending. The facility will attract regional sporting events, each generating local spending with participants and families staying in our hotels, eating in our restaurants, and shopping at our businesses. New commercial development. Commercial properties near recreation hubs demonstrate lower vacancy rates, higher lease values, further enhancing our commercial tax revenue. And property values and tax revenues. Properties within five hundred meters of similar facilities increase in value by five to eight percent, expanding our tax base, let alone the opportunities that new development will be triggered by the start of the new facility. Economic benefits. Sport tourism potential. We're gathering information from regional support organizations to learn what types of events could be hosted at the regional recreational center. Recent Nova Scotia sporting events generated millions in economic impact. Swimming competitions, basketball tournaments drive visitor spending. Accommodations and food services really receive a large portion of visitor dollars, and we're committed to facilitating sport tourism events. We recognize the significant investment this facility represents. Unlike most infrastructure projects, however, a regional recreational center has potential to generate economic returns through sport tourism. As documented in the feasibility study and our letter to council, sporting events across Nova Scotia have demonstrated substantial economic impacts. The two thousand and eighteen Special Olympics in Antilles generated seven point two million in spending and, and supported forty-nine local jobs. The two thousand and nineteen Scotties Tournament Harts in Sydney generated five point two million in spending and supported fifty-five local jobs. The two thousand and twenty-two Touchdown Atlantic in Wolfville generated nine point one million in spending and supported fifty-five local jobs. Our group is committed to partnering with you to attract and facilitate the sporting events that will bring visitors and spending to Kings County. We have members with experience in event organization who are prepared to work with facility management to maximize the potential. These aren't just recreation dollars. They're economic development investments that benefit local accommodations, restaurants, and retailers throughout the Sport tourism. Continued. So, Summerside and Charlottetown PEI with a population of fifty-five thousand, annual sports revenue of five hundred and twenty million. Kings County population six hundred and twen- sixty-two thousand plus. Investing in a multipurpose business hub can bring prosperity to a region. If it's fifty-two, five hundred and twenty million in PEI, what is the opportunity here?
I'll hand it over to Jessica for the next slide.
All right. So, our organization has gathered support letters from numerous members of our community, including businesses in tourism and hospitality, and you've already received one from the Old Orchard Inn. We've received letters of support from physicians and those involved in physician recruitment and retention, explaining how this facility is key to our community's health, well-being, and key to the recruitment and retention of health professionals in our region. We have letters of support from educational institutions, mental health organizations, allied health professionals, that explain that this facility is key to expanding and delivering their programming. We also, of course, have letters of support from sports organizations who can see the potential for their organizations to host events that we previously have never been able to host before. The facility also addresses essential community needs. So, as a parent myself, I've experienced this. Families set alarms in the morning to get their kids registered into swimming or recreational activities, only to have them fill up within minutes. Seniors have expressed, especially those with mobility challenges, that aquatics programs are their lifeline to maintaining their independence. These aren't luxuries. They are essential municipal services that directly impact our community's health, well-being, and our So, this slide highlights some of the responses that we've grabbed from our survey. We have hundreds of statements like these. Our young people have been particularly vocal about this facility. Many currently travel long distances for swimming lessons, sport training, and recreation opportunities. They see this center as vital to their development and quality of life. This facility will serve Kings County residents across their entire lifespan. Children will gain essential water safety skills. Families will have year-round recreation options. Adults will access health-promoting activities, and seniors will be able to maintain their mobility and independence. Even more importantly, it creates spaces where generations can interact, connect, and community bond. and community bonds can strengthen. And we don't have to look far to see the impact of active community support for recreation facilities. So on this slide, we have four examples of facilities serving populations smaller than Kings County. We have the LCLC in Bridgewater, Nova Scotia, Rath Eastlink Community Center in Truro, the Mariners Center, and that's an image pre-expansion in Yarmouth, and the Picto County Wellness Center in Picto County. So these are all examples of municipalities partnering with local towns, with other organizations, and these are all examples of things that could easily be done in Kings County based on our population. I mentioned the Mariners Center, that's an example, pre-expansion. So the Mariners Center, if you didn't know, is in the process of a large expansion. Their region has recognized the importance of recreational facilities to their community, but not only to their community, to especially the recruitment and retention of healthcare and other professionals to their region. So how are we doing? We're probably at time. So yeah, the next slide has a video, but I'm going to skip it. But if you haven't done so already, I would highly recommend you check out the Mariners Center expansion website. It has testimonials from many different community members, business members, explaining their rationale for the expansion. So I'll just quickly wrap up. Our organization wants to partner with the municipality to help move this project forward. We want, we have members who have pledged over twenty-seven hundred volunteer hours annually to help this project. We want to support fundraising, grant opportunities, securing donations. We are gathering and would like to represent community input, and we want to provide ongoing advocacy and support. So we want to thank you for the progress you've made so far on this project, and we want to encourage you to continue to move forward.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and I see you are prepared to maybe answer some questions. So at this time, I would ask any member of council if they have any questions of clarification to the presenter. And I would remind council that this is not an opportunity to debate with the presenters. This is an opportunity for you if you need any points of clarification and questions. So now would be the time. Well, I guess it was as clear as mud. And, oh no, we're lighting up here, just a second. Counselor Hiltz.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you, Jessica, Paul, thank you for the presentation. It was an eye-opener. You've answered a lot of questions that I did have. But I like that the commitment about the volunteer hours, you know, donations, the fundraising, that piece. Also, I'd love to have a copy, if you could email that to me, of that presentation. And that's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. Just a quick question. I know we've heard a lot from the swimming community and the need for a pool. What would you say the second, like, most requested recreation activity that people are seeking additional facilities for? It's like the number two and number three things that people are really looking? Or is it more of like a broad, just we're lacking in a number of different areas?
As you saw from the survey results, swimming pool is number one. The rest are a little bit of a mix. So for those who responded gymnasium, for example, there'll be responses from volleyball, basketball, pickleball. For those who responded an indoor fitness center, there will be responses from, you know, like, high-level athletes all the way to seniors. So it is quite a bit of a mix. That ranked, so that graph that I showed is a ranked graphic of their ratings. So we asked participant, or survey participants, to rank the facilities. But yeah, it is quite a mix, and we do have responses everywhere, from like, high-level athletes down to someone who just needs, you know, a space to keep strong so they can stay at home.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Great. Well, thank you very much for your presentation, and we've... Oh, just a second. I got a late, late-minute light come on here at Deputy Mayor Peckford.
Thank you, Mayor. Through you. Thank you for the presentation. It was great. Lot of useful information there as well. Just had a quick question about your membership. I know you said you have roughly eleven hundred members currently, and I'm sure we've probably received emails from close to half of those so far. I like to do a little research on each one, see where they're coming from. So do you have a breakdown where the majority of your members are located within the county? No, you said all postal codes across. Just wondering if you had percentage-wise where they mostly reside?
I don't have those numbers here with me. However, we do have postal codes. In our survey, we gathered postal codes, and that's how we can say that we have responses. So we could, I suppose, break that down by district?
No, that would be just fantastic, some background information just to look into. Thank you.
Okay.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have a great day. And so at this time, I would ask for a motion to receive the presentation, please. Moved by Counselor McPherson, seconded by Counselor Harding. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Okay, you... Counselor Best voted yes. Okay, motion carried. Thank you. Now we'll move on to Valley Wildcats. And again, we're at the opportunity to bring former counselor and deputy warden Brian Hurdle forward to make a presentation on behalf of the Valley Wildcats. And I see that he's brought Graham Baxter with him. And I see my good buddy Brian, and know Brian well. I don't have to remind him that he's got ten minutes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I must say it's more intimidating from this side of the table, looking at you all today. I guess I have no need for introduction of my name. I can tell you that there is life after council, and I found it, and I found a very enjoyable time with our Valley Wildcats. And when I talk about our Valley Wildcats, I'm going to talk about it very passionately. And as you can see, Mr. Graham Baxter, our owner, is here to my right, and I'm going to have an opportunity for him to speak as well. We'll stay within the ten minutes, because I know our mayor will not hesitate in cutting me off at that timeframe. But I can tell you that what I wanted to touch base with is this is not just about a hockey club. This is not just about a hockey team that plays in the town of Burwick. This is about volunteers that come from every one of your districts. Every one of your districts, from Scotts Bay to Harmony, right through from North Kingston to Lake Paul. We have such a large amount of volunteers to do off-ice job, off-ice. This is, I'm here to represent the off-ice volunteers that we have. And I can tell you that, as some of you would know, I sell advanced tickets. I take pride in sponsorship. I do the barbecuing at the golf tournaments. I do whatever's asked of me. I sling beer, and I might even drink one or two at times. But I can tell you that the, what we're trying to get across today, it's as simple, and it started with Graham Baxter, the mayor, Scott Conrad, and the late Greg Burr. We had a wonderful meeting here, and I can't help but pass my condolences along to you all, his family, and his young family. He was here in heart when I was here. And so I had a great relationship with him. But we started this conversation about the Wildcats at that time. And I can tell you that we're really looking for, to complement what some counselors have been able to do. They've been able to help us with grants to organizations, counselor grants to organizations. But I'm looking for a more sustainable amount of money. We're looking for a commitment. We need the County of Kings to be as proud of the Wildcats as I'm proud of the Wildcats. And I think that hopefully, when we get done today in our short ten minutes, that we may be able to convince you that, and I know you've got lots on your plate and lots of things to consider, but I do want you to consider what we're doing here as the right thing. I think we have a little bit of a clip to show you. I think it was sent to Yanni. Is that correct, Yanni? If we could show that now, I think would be appropriate.
The Valley Wildcats, not just one, but three teams representing all of the Annapolis Valley. Through the Kings Mutual Major Bantam Wildcats, the Coltech Major Midget Wildcats, and the Junior A Valley Wildcats, the club is the path for elite local hockey players to develop their skills and pursue their hockey careers in a high-performance program.
We have a unique situation here. We have three clubs under one umbrella. We have a Major Bantam, a Major Midget, and Junior A Club. Therefore, giving our kids a chance, they could be a Wildcat for seven or eight years. They can play at a high level and not have to leave home. Although we put the teams together to support our local talent to keep them from going away, we've had players here from Russia, we've had players here from Czech Republic, players from Las Vegas that have come here to play. In order to keep these teams sustainable, we depend on support from the local community and local businesses to keep them. This is an expensive program to keep going. So we're looking forward to working with everybody in the community.
Through the three teams, the Wildcats help players from thirteen to twenty years old improve as players on the ice and as community role models off the ice.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's absolutely crucial to have something like this in the Valley. I mean, like you just said, right from Bantam up to the junior level, it creates an opportunity for the kids to develop here at an elite level. And what we try to emphasize is the benefits and the importance of actually being good people and the transferable skills that hockey has on the ice than what it does actually off the ice and in the communities, for instance, leadership, discipline, sacrifice, being a good teammate, all those kind of things, I think, that are transferable to be a good person in the communities and as they grow up and grow older and actually go on into the workforce, the importance that hockey and sport has for these kids for development.
The results of the Wildcats' organization speak for themselves, with many players going on to higher levels, including current QMJHLers like Cole McLaren and Cam Wynotte of the Halifax Mooseheads, and Brady Burns of the St. John Seadogs. Wildcats players have gone on to university and college hockey in Canada and the U.S., including Port Williams' John Deacon with the Ottawa Gigi's, and of course, Drake Batherson. The New Minas native played with all three Wildcat teams before moving on to Major Junior, Team Canada with the World Juniors, the AHL, and finally, the National Hockey League with the Ottawa Senators. The Wildcats bring many players into our community. The organization spends around seven hundred thousand dollars in the local economy. Visits by family, including meals, overnight stays, and more, bring in around thirty thousand dollars a year, according to sports economic impact expert at Acadia University, Dr. Brian Van Blarkum. He says the Major Midget Tournament in August alone contributed almost sixty thousand dollars in new spending.
The other thing that we looked at a little bit was the degree to which players from outside the area come here and therefore, by default, attract parents and family members to visit this area that would not otherwise come. And those are just examples of the types of economic impacts that take place as a result of these activities. But they total about a hundred thousand dollars in a given year.
The Valley Wildcats have been in Burwick for a number of years. We think they are a huge addition to this town in so many ways. Particularly, we think they bring some economic drivers to the town, the number of people who come here to follow them, parents who come with the teams. We're hoping that as time goes on, that more and more businesses will get behind the teams.
The Wildcats have hosted players from every province in Canada, as well as the United States, Czech Republic, and even Russia. Those players are billeted with local families and live in the community, making connections that often last a lifetime.
It's a lot of fun. I've been doing it now for six years. I have four boys that live with me. I keep in contact with all my players, even after they've moved on. I really like being part of the Valley Wildcats because it is a family, and we have a lot of social stuff that we do. We do some things like billet bonding, where we go out and do things in the community, some fun stuff, some family stuff. I have grandchildren who think of these boys as part of the family, and it's been a wonderful experience for me.
Well, Brent says this is the best decision he's ever made this year, coming and playing junior A hockey. He loves all nineteen, twenty kids that he's playing with, loves the coaches. They just enjoy coming to the rink every night, every practice in the mornings, and it just makes it enjoyable for us to see them gel together as a team. The organization is a class-one organization, right from the executive to the coaches. We've been treated like great down here, and it's just enjoyable coming here. The Valley of Burwick is a very, very good place to play.
Wildcats players learn leadership and volunteering as they get involved with community organizations.
We do everything from school visits, seniors' homes. We help out with minor hockey as well. My biggest challenge for me is getting some of these boys out of their comfort zone, but once they get out of the comfort zone, they find it really rewarding, and they're really happy that they've done it for the community. No, the kids get excited. For instance, at the actual school program, they can't wait because they know it's Wildcat Wednesday, and they know that the Wildcats come on Wednesday, and it's like a countdown as to when they come. They play floor hockey, they go play in the snow, so we do lots of stuff with them.
Young hockey players idolize the Wildcats players and love nothing more than getting to interact with their hockey heroes.
Well, to them, I mean, they look at those guys like we look at NHL players. It's a big, big deal, yeah. And they're not used to going on in front of a whole bunch of fans and then such a big ice surface, so. Just seeing the look on their faces when they see these players and when they come on, and just the whole experience is a big, big, I don't even know how to say it. It's just great, yeah.
The Wildcats have also been involved with many community fundraising projects, including The Stockings Were Hung, K-Rock's Food Drive, The Salvation Army, and much more. And the community rallies around the club with a solid group of volunteers that make it all possible.
I have done the door, I've done the bar, and I've done the fifty-fifty. Wherever they need me, I will go. I love coming. I've made a lot of good friends doing this, and it's just been a wonderful atmosphere to see the community spirit come out and support the Wildcats. And I was coming to the games, and I just decided I needed a volunteer, and I have enjoyed every minute of it.
And as a business owner, I have one message for you. Get involved. Owning a business, I know anyone knows, it's expensive to sponsor events. Being involved with the Wildcats is a great opportunity for you to sponsor a hockey game or be involved with their golf tournament. But if you sponsor one of their games, for example, you can invite your staff. You can invite all of your clients. You can make it a community night. So I guess my message is get involved. You'll have more fun than you expected.
We know the Wildcats is a very valuable program for the Valley. We've seen it on the ice with player development, the players that have made the queue, gone to university to play, and now in the NHL as well. But what we've also seen is what a great opportunity it's been to develop our leaders of the future, our young players, their leadership and volunteer opportunities. But the community as well is so engaged in this, and the opportunities, what we've seen and the value for community pride, community spirit, people getting involved as fans and volunteers, and the economic impact that the program has made, it's been tremendous. But where do we go from here? We know we need to be more competitive. We know that we need to continue to develop our athletes. But we want to engage in the community more, support what they do, what people do, organizations and businesses do, and have them support what we do. We know that we can be more valuable and sustainable for years to come.
Great. I'll turn it over to Graham for whatever we got.
Not sure who that first speaker was, but that was brutal. But anyway, I just want to, I guess, a couple of things. My goal is to have these clubs sustainable. And like, you know, I know it's hard to tell by looking at me, but I'm getting a little long in the tooth. So, you know, they do bring a lot of value to the area. They bring a lot of people to the area. That's an old video. Our costs now are over eight hundred thousand between eight and nine thousand. Our costs now are over 800,000 between 800 and 900,000. The spinoffs, we normally have 10 to 12 players here that are going to Acadia that go there to school, which normally wouldn't go there. This year, we're down because we have, I think we have seven going to university and three going to high school, actually. One of the kids going to high school, his brother plays for the Utah in the NHL. So those people come in here, they'll spend money. We have a family, McConys, played here two years ago, that are looking to relocate here because they like the area. Our coaches come here. Well, Brandon's not the coach anymore, but he still lives here. He works here, he bought a home here. We have, what, I think probably 12 to 15 paid people, plus the volunteers. Some of them are full-time year-round. All of our coaches are paid, you know, at all levels, even at the lower levels. So basically, we had a study done in 2017, the MHL did. And at that time, with our club to the area, they claimed it generated around $700,000 to the area.
That's great. Thank you very much, Mr. Baxter, and thank you, Mr. Hurdle. We really appreciate it. I'm surprised that you said that that video was quite a while ago. You look, I thought it looked like you might have done it yesterday.
I was older then.
Anyway, thank you. And are you prepared to ask or accept any, if you had any questions from council? Certainly, we'd try. Mr. Mayor? Thank you. And I think you got your 10 minutes, Mr. Former Deputy Warden. All right. So any questions to council on the presenters? Again, this is not an opportunity to debate with the presenters. It's an opportunity to ask questions, clarification. Counselor Gates.
Thank you through you, Mr. Mayor. Awesome presentation. Can I just clarify the yearly costs for the ice surface? And by the way, my son-in-law, Nick Blanchard, went through your program.
Yeah, right, yeah. My grandson, this is God, is the Godfather.
Yes. So if you just have a ballpark for your yearly cost for operation, that would be just for the record.
Of what it costs to run the three clubs or what? Between 800 and 900,000. Now, the two lower levels, they pay, but it's the cost for the U-15 or like last year, we spent like 104,000, but the registration fee is 2,200. And then we do a few programs, we sell tickets on $5,000 and get some sponsors. The Midget or U-18 is around 160, 170,000.
So approximately a million would be close?
It would be, yeah, it's getting up there. We try to keep the cost down because we're like, there's low-income people, they're kids, some high athletes that, you know, would like to play, can't afford it. So we try to run it, keep it down. So we've had kids, we had a kid last year that didn't pay a cent, couldn't afford it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Gates. Counselor Sappington.
Thank you. I love that your presentation shows that you're living proof for economic development and that people move here for sports. I was wondering, you did answer a bit about how you help make it equitable for all in regards to some kids being able to play for free. Is there a priority to allow local children to play?
Oh, yeah, yes. They get the two, at the two lower levels, local kids come first, but to be competitive. And there was a time when I first took the team over, we were lucky to get enough players out to play. At that time, that was, I've had these clubs for 14 years. Their registration back then was $5,500 for U-18. But, yeah, local players come first, outside players. At the junior level, it's tier-two hockey, it's competitive, it's very high, it's high level, so you can't, there's not enough local players to support that, but we do have local players for sure.
And just to add that, if I may, Graham, we do have a special cost at the door for our spectators. Anybody that's enrolled in minor sport within the vicinity, they get in for half price. And we've had lots of children that didn't have admission. We never turned any child away, ever. Wonderful. Great presentation. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And at this time, I'll ask if, thank you. Does anyone wish to make a motion to have the committee of the hall ask staff to return with a report regarding if and how the municipality might be able to participate in the Wildcat program? Moved by Counselor McPherson, seconded by Counselor Best. Okay, all those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Move on to item number seven, council. Administration Volunteer Recognition Events Awards. Maria La...how? Recreation Coordinator presenting.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and council. The intent of my presentation today is that the committee of the hall received the plan for the 2025 Volunteer Celebration. Administering annual volunteer awards and recognition is set at our municipal policy. Among other aspects, the policy lists categories of recognition, addresses how nominations are processed, and calls for an annual recognition event. The event of volunteer recognition and awards was designed to support volunteers who enrich our communities. To honor their contributions, we host an annual event recognizing nominated community members. We accept nominations early in the year where community members and volunteer organizations submit applications to recognize volunteers who contribute to our community. Award categories, our Youth Volunteer of the Year Award recognizes one youth, ages 13 to 24, for outstanding community service and dedication. Volunteer of the Year Award honors one individual for significant contributions to their community through volunteer work. And Ted Meldrum Award, named in memory of former municipal employee and dedicated recreation volunteer Ted Meldrum. This award celebrates one individual who shows exceptional community spirit through volunteerism. The 2025 Volunteer Celebration will be an awards presentation, followed by a dessert reception on the evening of November 13th from 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. and will be held in the municipal buildings, council chambers, and lobby spaces. Invitations to this event will be delivered to each nominee plus three guests, each nominator or nominating organization for up to three guests initially, all members of the council plus one guest. After there is VP deadline, any additional guests can be added to the event list to a maximum of 160 total attendees. The spaces will technically allow for more attendees, but we want the space to be comfortable for everybody. The evening will begin with doors opening at 6:30. When staff will greet all guests while the band plays music. The more formal hosted awards ceremony will begin at 7:00 p.m. here in council chambers. Each nominee will be announced and presented with certificates and gifts of appreciation. And award recipients for the Ted Meldrum Award, Youth Volunteer of the Year and Volunteer of the Year will be presented with their awards along with thank-you gift baskets. A dessert reception will immediately follow the awards ceremony in the lobby. The doors to council chambers will be opened and the meeting space will be turned over to allow additional gathering space. Catered local desserts will be available for everyone to enjoy while mingling to the background sounds of local musical performers. Funds for this event were allocated in the 2025-26 operating budget. And recommendation that the committee of the hall received the briefing dated September 16, 2025 regarding the 2025 Volunteer Celebration events, event and awards as information.
Okay. Before I ask for a motion to receive the briefing, thank you, Maria. Is there any questions to Maria on her presentation? Counselor McPherson.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, through you. Thank you very much for the presentation. It's always an exciting time of year. I'm just curious to the nomination, excuse me, to the nomination process. Do you have a little bit of information on how we go about ensuring that the deserving recipients are nominated?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, that is in our policy. So it happens at the beginning of spring. We would usually open nominations. We announce that on our Facebook and as well as on our website. And so there is a program which accepts nominations from all over the Kings County. And then we gather all that information for a month. And once we accept it, like, once it's done, we invite mayor and the deputy mayor to score those sheets through, there is like also, it's in the policy, the way how it is done. And then we, once we have the volunteer, it's like a volunteer day here in Canada, then we announce those nominees. And then the people who won will be announced during the celebration.
Thank you for that. If I may just follow up, Mr. Mayor, please. So has the deadline, I guess I'm looking for specifics, has the deadline already passed for nominations for this season?
Yes, we have accepted that in April and we announced nominations in April.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So do we have a mover and a seconder, please? To the move by Counselor Gates, seconded by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor or against that the committee of the hall receives the briefing dated September 16, 2025 regarding the 2020, 2025 Volunteer Celebration Event and Awards nomination. All those for or against, please vote accordingly. Motion carried. Thank you again. Now we'll move on to engineering and public works. The cost shared program for paving of subdivision streets. Dan Hagen, Strategic Project Specialist will be presenting. Dan.
Good morning, Mayor Corcoran and Mayor's members of council. Thank you for having me here this morning to present to you the recommendations regarding the province of Nova Scotia's 2026 to 2027 Cost Shared Program for Paving of Subdivision Streets. The intent of this presentation is to provide committee of the hall with the necessary information regarding staff's assessment of the list of 10 subdivision roads recommended for the 2026-2027 Cost Shared Program for Paving of Subdivision Streets with Nova Scotia Public Works. The roads related to this program are roads from a 1995 list that formed part of the 1996 Provincial Municipal Service Exchange Agreement. The list contained 393 road sections and totaled 135.25 kilometers in our municipality. The Cost Shared Program operates under Cost Sharing Agreement Number 2023-014. The 2026-2027 project year is the final year of the program under this current agreement. Each year municipalities in Nova Scotia requested by Nova Scotia Public Works to submit a list of 10 priority roads that they would like Nova Scotia Public Works to consider for repaving. And the municipality and Nova Scotia Public Works shares the paving costs 50/50. Ultimately, Nova Scotia Public Works reviews each list and decides on which roads will be paved for the project year. The municipality has no say in the final decision of which roads are approved by Nova Scotia Public Works. Field reviews of the condition ratings of road sections in the network were completed by EPW staff in June and August 2025. And comprehensive database updates were completed based on those inspections. A priority road assessment was completed using condition ratings and financial, environmental, and social-cultural scores, otherwise known as FESE scores. FESE scores are used as an indicator of level of service for each road section. Essentially, the poorest-conditioned road sections with the highest FESE scores are the highest priority roads for paving. Based on staff's review, the recommended 10 road sections for the 2026-27 year, sorry, list have a total road length of 323.24 kilometers, had an average FESE score of 69, and all the road sections are located in growth centers. Two of the 10 road sections are in damaged condition, which is the poorest-conditioned rating under our current assessment method. And eight of 10 road sections are in poor-three condition, which is the second poorest-conditioned rating in our current assessment method. The proposed list has road sections located throughout the growth centers in the municipality, including in alphabetical order. Canning has three roads, Coldbrook two, Kingston has three roads, New Minus has one road, and Port Williams has one road. From a financial perspective, the municipality shares the cost of paving with Nova Scotia Public Works 50/50. With respect to alternatives, the assessment and prioritization of our recommended road list for 2026-2027 is based on policy EPW-04-012, Subdivision Street Paving Priority List Policy. Because the assessment is conducted based on a municipal policy, there are no recommended alternatives to the list described in the RFD. With respect to strategic plan alignment, the key strategic priorities identified in this RFD include strong communities, critical infrastructure, and economic development, development of growth centers and infrastructure. Regarding the next steps in implementation, the 2027-2026-27 list is required to be submitted to Nova Scotia Public Works no later than October 31st, 2025. Staff are also recommending that, along with our list of 10 roads, that the municipality note in our submission to Nova Scotia Public Works that we would be interested in paving additional roads as part of the 2026-2027 program up to our budgeted value for 2025-2026 fiscal. In relation to engagement for the program for paving of subdivision streets, a copy of the RFD was provided directly to the villages and the municipality on September 10th with a request for comments from the villages to be submitted to the municipality by September 30th, 2025. In summary, our recommendation is as follows. That committee of the hall recommend municipal council direct the chief administrative officer to submit the list of recommended subdivision roads for paving contained in the September 16, 2025 request for decision to the Nova Scotia Department of Public Works under Cost Sharing Agreement Number 2023-014 for 2026-2027 fiscal year.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Does any member of council have any questions to Dan for clarification on his presentation? Again, it's not a time to debate. Counselor Sappington.
Thank you through you, Mayor. So you said that when we submit 10 roads, we don't necessarily get the 10 that we requested. Do we still get 10 and it's just a matter of different roads are picked over the suggested roads? Or are you saying that sometimes we don't even get the 10?
Through you, Mayor Corcoran. It's a very good question, Counselor Sappington. We don't always get 10. So, for example, last year, we got one. The previous year before that, we got four. Previous year before that, we got four. And I think the previous year before that, we did get 10. So it's how they score these things on their end, I'm unsure, but that's how it plays out typically.
Counselor Harding.
Great work. I'm glad to see that number there. We really need it. I guess this might be a question that the CAO might have to help answer. I thought we were looking into trying to work with the provincial government in expanding that system somehow. Where are we on that?
To the mayor, to the counselor. So the mayor and I did meet with the minister of municipal affairs and the deputy minister. And the deputy minister is both the deputy minister of public works and of municipal affairs. And we presented an overview to them of a concept. The mayor and I then met with, this program is specific to rurals. We met with two other rurals to see if they would, for lack of a better word, coalesce with us and go along. So now we're just, we're fine-tuning that to get the proposal in front of... So now we're just, we're fine tuning that to get the proposal in front of at least three councils, so it's being worked on.
Okay, thank you very much and great work.
Counselor Lutz.
Thank you, through you, Mayor. That's excellent news that we just heard from the CAO, so really glad to hear. My question may also need to go to the CAO. We know that the budget for this program is $2 million, $1 million from municipalities and $1 million from the province. Is that the same this year?
From the rurals and a million from the province, a few million dollars.
Thank you. And just a quick note, when I started this, the list of red, I think went on for multiple pages. So it is heartening to see the red only down to one whole page and a bit. So it does seem like we are making progress, probably due to those, that large investment the province made a couple of years ago where they doubled the program. But it is good to see, like despite the frustrations of this program, that it is, the current way we manage it does seem to work really well. So I would thank staff for their work.
Okay, great. So we have a recommendation in front of you. Do we have a mover and a seconder? Move by Deputy Mayor Peckford, second by Counselor Sappington. All those in favor or against, please vote in the usual manner. Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Dan. And now we'll move on to planning. We, we have a request for an amendment to the Municipal Planning Strategy and Land Use Bylaw to permit accessory dwellings in rural areas. Laura Moser, our manager of planning, will be presenting. Morning, Laura.
Good morning, council, and to you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to present from here, but it's not on this screen, so I'm actually going to go back over here. Sorry, thanks. So we are here to discuss potential amendments to our planning documents to enable accessory dwellings in rural areas. The origin for this request comes from Mr. Sean Dixon, who in October 2024 submitted a request that accessory dwellings be permitted in the agricultural or A1 zone. This is as a result of a residential unit that he had created in his barn, which had formerly been used as a home-based business. The municipality became aware of this illegal unit as part of the provincial short-term rental registry that was enacted last year in August. In terms of overall background, in October 2023, the municipality approved amendments for accessory dwellings within growth centers only. So all residential zones within growth centers currently permit accessory dwellings. And in October 2024, the municipality adopted amendments permitting the use of any residential unit as a short-term rental. So we would know those as Airbnbs or Verbos, although there are other platforms through which those can be rented. Since then, we have received dozens of inquiries related to accessory dwellings within rural areas. And I don't know that any one zone has been inquired about more than others. So just generally in our rural areas, folks have been requesting the ability to build an accessory dwelling for a number of reasons. Currently, all of our rural zones, with the exception of our shoreline zones, so the zones around our lakes permit two-unit dwelling or semi-detached dwelling, so two units on the property already. But currently, it is required to be within one structure. Staff conducted, as part of this request, conducted a jurisdictional review of neighboring municipalities. And all neighboring municipalities permit either accessory dwellings or multiple main dwellings within their rural zones, those that have rural areas. We did review the towns of Kenful, Woolful, and Berwick, but as they have limited rural areas, we, they do permit accessory dwellings, but they're not similar. So the potential benefits for these amendments would be the flexibility for the provision of housing on rural lots. Many of our inquiries have been related to the housing of family members, whether they are elderly parents or whether they are adult or adult-ish children who are having a difficult time entering the housing market or securing a safe and affordable housing. We have also received inquiries from farming families looking to construct a second dwelling on their property as part of their succession planning, where an elderly farmer is looking to gradually retire out of farming and remain on the farm to assist farming children who will ultimately take over the farm. So our staff recommendation is to amend the municipal planning documents to permit two dwellings in all rural zones that permit residential uses, including our shoreline zones. However, we would be looking to regulate the location of that accessory dwelling within the agricultural or A1 zone to minimize the loss of farmland. You do have in your agenda package an appendix on the importance of preservation of farmland, which I strongly urge you to review, just because so much of our planning is based on that principle. In terms of the process we would follow, I've created this flow chart. The boxes in red indicate options for public input. So we would begin with a public information meeting that would invite members of the public to receive a similar presentation to this and provide feedback. Staff would then do a staff review and prepare amendments, which would then be presented to the Planning Advisory Committee, at which point if the Planning Advisory is looking to move forward with the amendments, they would host a public participation meeting since these would involve amendments to the municipal planning strategy. We would then seek a recommendation out of the committee to be taken to council at first reading, at which should council wish to move forward, we would follow with a public hearing and second reading, and then a provincial review and ultimate approval. And that concludes my presentation. I'll pass it back to the mayor for council discussion.
Thank you. Before we move on to the recommendation, I'll ask if there's any member of council has any questions to the presenter for clarification. Seeing none then, we'll move on to the recommendation that the Committee of the Hall recommend municipal, oh. I got, I got a late light on here. Counselor Hiltz.
Thank you, Mayor, through you.
You guys are just testing me this morning, aren't you?
No, you're correct. I was late on the draw there. Through you, Mayor. So accessory buildings, so I'm assuming that they have to be smaller than the existing dwelling?
We, as this is simply, through you, Mr. Mayor, to Counselor Hiltz, since this is simply seeking authorization to pursue the project, we don't have those specifics as yet. Currently, we don't regulate the size of an accessory dwelling within the growth centers.
Okay.
But that could be something we, we take under consideration, certainly.
Okay, thank you.
In other words, you can't put one of your cousins in your shit. All right. The Committee of the Hall recommend municipal council direct the chief administrative officer to begin the process of amending the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to permit the development of accessory dwellings in rural areas as described in the request for decision dated September the 16th, 2025. Move by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor McPherson. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Motion carried, great, thank you, Ms. Moser. We'll move on to board and committee reports. We have a diversity committee report that was submitted by Counselor Sappington. Do you, do you have anything to add to your report, Counselor Sappington?
Yes, Ms. Mayor.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that the staff has put a lot of work into putting together our MIGMA art exhibit at our MOK building. An opening night reception will be on October 2nd at 6:00 PM. There'll be a vendors market and it's free to attend and open tall. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Is there any questions to Counselor Sappington on her report? Okay, committee reports, is, is there any verbal reports from any member of council? Deputy Mayor Peckford.
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to make a report on the Greenwood Source Water Protection. The Greenwood Source Water Protection Committee met on Thursday, September 11th to review the ongoing projects and upcoming initiatives. Work on the new water transmission line is scheduled to begin December 1st, 2025, marking a key step in upgrading local water infrastructure. In addition, the construction of the Zeke Brook Water Treatment Facility has been awarded to Mid Valley Construction with work expected to commence within the next four to six weeks. The committee's source water management plan will be submitted to Nova Scotia Environment in the coming weeks. This approval is required before the plan can be incorporated into existing policy and before the proposed amendments to the 2019 bylaws can move forward. The committee is also seeking a new citizen appointee to join its work. Additionally, plans underway to include water-related notices and information of future water bills, bill mailouts to keep residents better informed about ongoing projects and updates. Updates on projects and progress and any required council actions will be provided as these initiatives advance. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any questions to the deputy mayor on his report? No? Okay, we'll move on then to committees of council. Is there any other verbal reports from committees of council? None? Well then, we'll move on to external boards and committees. Are there any verbal reports from external boards or committees? No? All right, then can I get a motion to receive the reports for information? Move by Counselor Harding, second by somebody? Counselor Sappington? All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Okay. Motion carried. Counselor Gates, I presume you voted? Yes? Oh, Hiltz, oh, okay, yeah. Oh, okay, and Counselor Hiltz is in favor. All right, we'll move on then. Motion carried. Correspondence, we received correspondence from the Horton Safe Grad group thanking us. And so can we get a motion to receive that correspondence, please? Move by Counselor Lutz, second by Counselor McPherson. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Motion carried, thank you. Now we'll move on to other businesses. Are there any other business that come before council? Okay, Counselor Best.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'd just like to give a little report on the Appledome Golf Classic. I'd like to thank Mayor Corcoran and Counselor Everett McPherson. They put a team into the great tournament. We, this year we had 72 teams full again. And the good news that we raised over $54,000 profit. The only way we can keep the Appledome Arena going is fundraising. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Counselor Gates.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm wondering if I could request that we have an ad hoc committee formed to look at the rec center. Would, it would allow us flexibility and a focused approach by assembling specific experts to look at it. That would be a temporary thing. Just wonder if we could gauge the reception to have an ad hoc committee formed for that purpose? Thank you.
Did you want to comment on that, Mr. Sappington? Sure, I'm going to ask the CAO to comment on that, Counselor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor, through you, Mayor, to Counselor Gates. So we, we've kind of put things on a track to come in front of council for different steps of an approval process. I know we've had some email traffic, you and I, about the concept of a committee. So I think it's, I think it's a good idea. But I think that there's, there's, the steps that we have to go through first is to, is to get confirmation exactly from Woolful and Kenful of how they plan to participate. There are a couple of other items that were laid out in council, I believe, in July that would require addressment. So that, in my mind, there could be one, possibly two committees that would be formed. So I think we're getting closer to there, but I don't think we've, our, you folks here around this council table have looked at all the items first, or yet. So once that's completed, we can follow up on that.
Awesome, appreciate it, thank you.
All right, so we'll move on to comments from the public. If there's any member of the public that wishes to come to the podium to provide comments, this would be the time. We would ask that you state your name, your address, and that we are limited to two minutes.
Hi, everybody. My name is Mike LaPointe. I will not give you my address, I've given it to you before, but in the name of security, I think that it's better that I don't mention my address. So I think a lot of you know.
Maybe you could at least.
I'm from, I'm from.
Kings County or something?
I'm from Kings County. I've been paying taxes here for 15 years and I live in Port Williams, okay? First of all, I want to thank everybody here for all the work you've done so far. For those of you who don't know me, I guess I'm the founder of Residents in Favor Of. A lot of you have been in touch with me and I appreciate that very much. The support has been tremendous. Unfortunately, I've had to step back because of health reasons and I have to listen to my heart. So I think you all understand that. And I'm doing really well after eight weeks and I'll be doing a lot better after another eight weeks. The health system is unbelievable. I can tell you that when you need help, you're getting help and you're getting superior help. I was in the ICU in Halifax for a couple of weeks and I love all the people over there and it's been tremendous. The second point I want to mention is for those of you who are still on the fence, or those of you who are against it, I would ask you to think about 60,000 people. I know that you're all by districts over here and I respect that and I think it's tremendous. But at the same time, this is a regional project. This is bigger than everybody here. And basically, if we don't do it now, it'll be done probably by the next council. But I think that you're the council who can do it. Some of you have come 360 degrees on this and I appreciate that 200%. It's not for me, I'm doing this for my family, I'm doing this for my grandkids. And I think that we all have some of those, or we will. And the need out there is tremendous. In fact, my need is tremendous now. I wish I could use a rec center. So please give it some solid thought, open your hearts. That's all we can ask for. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. LaPointe. And, and sorry to hear about your health issues, but glad that you're on the mend. Okay. All right, I guess we're at the point where I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn. Move by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. All right, motion carried. So don't run away from the building, but we're going to have a special council meeting in, after a 10-minute recess. With the exception of Counselor Peter Allen, who is absent due to illness. So I would ask for a motion to accept Counselor Allen's excuse that he cannot attend due to illness. Moved by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor Best. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. I'm going to do the land acknowledgement again. "The municipality of the County of Kings is a Mi'kmaq, the ancestral, unceded, and current territory of the Mi'kmaq people. The municipality of the County of Kings is a neighbor to the Annapolis Valley First Nations and Gloskap First Nation. As well as a diverse urban and rural indigenous population, we are all treaty people and commit to upholding the peace and friendship treaties and working towards reconciliation in all areas in the municipalities." We have an agenda in front of you, and I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda, council. Moved by Counselor Sappington, second by Counselor Hiltz. All those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. Disclosure of conflict of interest. Is there any counselor who wishes to declare a conflict of interest on any of the items on the agenda today? No? We'll move on, then, to recommendations from committee of the hall. We will deal with these recommendations that were just passed at the committee of the hall. First of all, is a recommendation, request for an amendment for the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw. The municipal council directs the CAO to begin the process of amending the municipal planning strategy and land use bylaw to permit the development of accessory buildings in rural areas as described in the request for decision dated September 16th, 2025. Do I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Counselor Gates, second by Counselor McPherson. All those in favor or -- well, unless there's any -- is there any debate? Sorry. Moving a little quick. Is all those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. All right. Number 4B. "That municipal council asked the CAO to return a report regarding if and when -- if and how the municipality might be able to participate in the Valley Wildcats programs." Do I have a mover and a seconder, please? Moved by Counselor Harding, second by Counselor Lutz. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor or against, please vote accordingly. I guess there's no members of the public here, so we can move right along to number six. I am looking for a motion to adjourn. We have Counselor Lutz, second by Counselor Sappington. And all those in favor signify by saying aye? Or, no, I'm sorry. Vote accordingly, for or against. And that must be a record, a five-minute council meeting with Everett McPherson in attendance. [laughter] Oh, Everett's not crying.